Good evening and welcome. This is a public hearing of the Zoning Board of Appeals of the City of Evanston. The zoning ordinance directs this body to hear applications for major variations, special uses, and appeals from decisions of the zoning administrator. Depending on the type of matter, this board will either make a final determination or send its recommendation to city council. Please call the roll.
Lisa Deacon?
Here.
Scott Gingold?
Here.
Mary McCauley?
Here.
Mary Beth Burns?
Here.
Violetta Cullen?
Present.
Myrna Aravalo?
Here.
And with five members present, we do have quorum tonight. Also present tonight is zoning planner Melissa Klotz. This is a formal meeting, and there are rules that govern our proceedings. Most importantly, only one person speaks at a time, so all testimony may be accurately recorded. Anyone who wishes to address the board regarding any matter on the agenda will have the opportunity to do so at the appropriate time. Our procedure is to hear from staff on the documents on file, and then receive testimony and other evidence from the applicant or appellant. Next, persons who wish to make a statement regarding the matter may do so at that time. Any person with a legal interest in property located within 500 feet of the subject property may present evidence, reasonably question witnesses, or seek a continuance of the hearing. When all supporting and opposing testimony and statements have been heard, the applicant or appellant will be given the opportunity for rebuttal or a closing statement. Then, the board will close the record and begin deliberations. All testimony will be under oath, and although we do not apply the strict rules of evidence, please limit your testimony or statement to your personal knowledge. When you address the board, please state your name and address and sign in on the provided sheet. Our meetings are audio and video recorded. Please make sure that you are at a microphone when asking questions or making statements so that you can be properly recorded. All proceedings are subject to broadcast at a later date. Any matter not concluded at tonight's hearing will be continued to our next regularly scheduled meeting. There are two items on the agenda this evening. One is old business and one is new business. But however, our first item on the agenda is the meeting minutes, approval of the meeting minutes. So does anybody have, did anybody get a chance to review them?
Yes, I have a comment on the meeting minutes. On page two, where it states Ms. Deacon requested the applicant submit letters of support from neighbors, that is true. And then the paragraph goes on to say if the open motion fails, et cetera, et cetera, at the next scheduled hearing, Ms. Deacon will ask. The rest of that paragraph, I don't think should be attributed to me. I think that was Melissa describing perhaps how that process could go, but I didn't state that process, and it should not be attributed to me.
Okay. Anybody else, any other corrections? Great. Do we have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the minute, the meeting minutes of October 18, 2016, but the suggested changes and corrections.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I will note that those not voting were not present for that meeting. And so now we will move on to old business, which is 2301 Lawndale. And I see that the applicant and his architect are here. So, Melissa, do whatever you do. So, does the applicant have any additional information to provide?
My name is Mike Howser. I'm the architect for the project. We do not have any additional letters. It's just been a busy week for the client, and we're confident we can get them. And if that's the direction it goes, then we're happy coming back in two weeks.
Okay. Then, given that, we currently have an open motion for approval with a two to two vote. So, our member who was not present at the last meeting, have you reviewed the minutes and/or video?
I have. I've reviewed, I've reviewed the packet. I watched the entire video of the last meeting, and I have reviewed the minutes that were just approved. And I, my vote is cast in favor of the motion, that the project be approved. And I have a few comments I'd like to make about the findings, and it's my hope that the members who voted against it may change, may be willing to change their votes and not require another meeting in two weeks. So, the standards that were voted against, or that one or more members found were not met, were standards one, four, and seven, according to the minutes. Standard one was, I believe, that there was, there would be a substantial adverse impact on the neighboring properties, or that it would not have a substantial adverse impact. Based on having watched the video and the fact that there were no witnesses at all that came against the project, I don't feel there was any evidence submitted that there would be any adverse impact on the neighboring properties, much less a substantial one. And therefore, I believe that standard is met. The only comment that there might be some impact came from the chair, who admittedly lives within 500 feet of the property. And if she feels that there would be a substantial impact in her eyes, then she, I believe she should have been a witness in the case and not an arbiter of the case. But I don't think there was any factual evidence submitted by anyone that there would be a substantial adverse impact on any adjoining neighbor. The fourth standard has to do with whether the property owner would suffer a particular hardship or practical difficulty as distinguished from a mere inconvenience. In this case, the hardship comes from the fact that the property, the house sits on the property where it was built in the 1920s and in the style of the 1920s. The project is, I believe, a modest extension of that existing footprint, and the hardship is unique to the property in that respect. And I don't believe that it's a hardship that was either created by this applicant, which the board agreed by voting that number C had been met. And I don't believe that it's just an inconvenience. The property line is where it is, and whether it be aesthetic or some other reason, it makes sense to extend that further and doesn't further encroach in any way on that property line to extend it. So I believe that standard is also met. And then with respect to number seven, is limited to the minimum change necessary to alleviate the hardship. Again, I believe that has been met. It's a modest request, and it's an extension of the existing property footprint, which we routinely grant variances on. With respect to these same standards, I believe that the standard is met and that nominally saying you could do this one or two inches lower is not a feasible alternative, and therefore, I believe it is the minimum change necessary. I also wanted to comment on the discussion that was had over whether there were letters of support or letters against from the neighbors. Again, the zoning board puts out a notice to everybody that lives within 500 feet of the property and gives them an opportunity to come and be heard in front of us when they feel there will be some negative impact on them, or whether they feel the project is not in the neighborhood's interests. Again, not one single person came out and spoke against that project. And I think the default assumption should be then, the neighborhood who was on notice and chose not to come in doesn't have a problem with that project. And we routinely don't make issue of the fact that people don't do or don't come in with letters of support or letters against if they don't have that. It's not a requirement for our consideration. So, all of that having been said, I believe all the standards are met and that we should grant the variance on the motion made.
Thank you for your thoughtful responses to the standards. So we are currently at three to two. And the, the conversation we were having is about, you can sit down if you want.
Do you have one more point of clarification, if now is the right time?
Not yet. Sorry. So, the issue at hand, right, is whether we want to rescind the motion and open either A, just rescind the motion if anyone who voted no feels compelled to change their vote, and/or rescind the vote, rescind the motion and open the record to allow for more testimony. Those are the two things here that are, or we leave it as is and we wait. We continue the case until the, another board member has the opportunity to review the case and vote on it. So, thoughts on that, now that we're on the record?
I guess the first question is, do the two board members that voted know whether or not they would reconsider changing their vote?
No. I respectfully disagree with your assessment of the facts, so I will not be changing my vote.
Without additional, additional documentation from the neighbors talking about how they perceive this project and whether that would impact on their enjoyment and use of their properties, I won't be changing my vote this evening either. I do think that, I do think that letters of support or against are an important way for us to understand how the immediate neighbors would be impacted or not impacted. And while we notify neighbors, I don't take that as the fact that nobody's standing before us yelling that they object as sort of de facto support.
I do think, I do think the, the conversation about neighborhood, neighbor letters is an important one, that we should perhaps have a conversation after cases have been heard, because I know that there are some differences of opinion here, and I think we should probably work through those as a board. I'm not sure that they are necessarily pertinent to this particular case.
Well, I do have a follow-up question for member Deacon, which is, which of the standards that you thought was not met, do you think would be met by letters of support from the neighbors that might change your vote? Because perhaps the applicant can tailor that concern when they speak to the neighbors.
I would be looking at standard one.
Okay. I mean, that's what I assumed. So, I guess then my question is, on what factual basis then do you believe, in this case, on what factual basis do you believe there would be a substantial negative impact on the neighborhood?
Frankly, I would have to go back and review the full file from last session, because, you know, you know, I prepared for that discussion two weeks ago, so it would be not appropriate for me to sort of comment on that specifically without going back through the full proposal.
That's fair.
Okay. So, it sounds like the net of it is, we are at a three to two, so there, it seems as though there's no point in rescinding the motion and/or reopening the record, and that we, the case will be continued to the next meeting when we can get another board member here to hear the case and to weigh in.
And/or for you to collect letters of support in the next two weeks.
So, do we need a motion to continue, or it just naturally continues? Because we're in a deadlock?
Naturally.
Naturally continues. So, thank you for coming out. Sorry. I wish we had more members here so that we could get this resolved for you. But I do appreciate your time and effort, so thank you. All right. With that, we will move on to new business, which is 1026 Elmwood Avenue. And Melissa, will you read that into the record, please? Oh, when do I swear people in again? I forget. Before, after? Okay.
Before they testify.
Melissa, before you read it into the record, I should just say, in the matter of 1026 Elmwood Street, that one of the architects, Kindon Mills, has done work at my house in the past and is also a friend. I do not believe this will impact on my ability to hear the case impartially, and we've had no conversations about this matter before the hearing.
Thank you.
Kindon Mills and John Holbert, architects, apply for major zoning relief to construct a third-story addition to a single-family residence in the R1 single-family district. The applicants propose to construct an addition above the first two stories that features a third story with a 9.1-foot exterior knee wall, where a maximum two and a half stories is permitted, zoning code section 6829, and where a maximum three-foot exterior knee wall is permitted above two stories, zoning code section 6183. The applicants also propose a 2.3-foot north interior side yard setback where five feet is required, zoning code section 6828A3, to raise the existing roof line. The zoning board of appeals is the determining body for this case. On October 17, 2016, the applicant submitted revised plans that feature a compliant two and a half story addition on the south side of the property that does not require zoning relief. The revised plan still includes a request for zoning relief for a 2.3-foot north interior side yard setback where five feet is required, zoning code section 6828A3, to raise the existing roof line. Documents included as part of the record include variation application submitted August 9, 2016, standards form, zoning analysis, plat of survey, site plan, floor plans, elevations revised October 17, 2016, and including other roof options, renderings including other roof options, letters of support, image of property, aerial view of property, zoning map of property, and dapper meeting minutes of September 21, 2016.
If you would mind, first, we're going to swear you in. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth throughout the course of these proceedings?
I do.
Fantastic. Would you give us your name and your business address, please?
My name is Kindon Mills at 2147 North Clermont Avenue in Chicago.
Great. Thank you very much. Would you please describe your case for us?
My client's family moved into the house at 1026 Elmwood two years ago with the intention of converting the existing two-flat into a single-family residence. The property as it exists is a two-story. I don't think anyone would call the roof a half-story, because there is a ridge line at six feet, four inches. The pitch is at 4 and 12. The first floor of the project is 20 inches below grade, so not a first floor, but not a basement. So the client, in order to convert to a single-family, to make it kind of equivalent to the neighbors on the street, would like to be able to access attic space for storage, for playroom, for kind of overflow space for their growing family. So the first floor, which is under 1,100 square feet, is kitchen, dining room, living room, bathroom, and the bump out on the south side is the staircase. The second floor would be the bedroom floor. And then the third floor, we propose to change the 4 and 12 pitch to a 12 and 12 pitch, so that we are able to provide adequate headroom for living space on the half-story that would be then the attic space. That we propose to keep the existing eve line, so not extend the eve line, and just raise the pitch so that they can access that space comfortably. We altered the south volume from flat roof three-story to a two and a half story with a gable facing the street, so that the roof line would be more similar to the other buildings on, the other houses on the street.
Does anybody have any questions? Well, I gotta ask some. They're gonna be easy, trust me. So, you're not adding any square footage? You're not increasing the footprint of the existing building, is that correct?
No, not at all. Not at all. They love their yard. They don't want any more house.
Fantastic. And, yeah. So I think that's the only question I've got, just for clarification. Anybody else?
Well, I'm just gonna say, I'm actually in support of the project, because it will make the house similar to its neighbors.
I agree.
Hang on, we're not closing the record yet.
Oh, well.
So, did you want, did you have anything else you'd like to say before we close the record?
I don't think so.
Fabulous. Thanks. Have a seat.
Thanks.
All right. With that, we will close the record. I've already had two comments on, on the state of this. The other side?
I agree. I think it's a good project.
I agree. I think it's a good project. I think it approves, improves upon what's there now and is in line with the neighbors.
I'm gonna go further and say, I really, I know we gave you lemons by not noticing it correctly, but I think you guys have really made lemonade out of it by being able to reduce, getting rid of those variances from the south side. I appreciate the effort involved in that and appreciate how that, how you guys have worked to do that. So I am grateful for all of that. And so with that, we will go through the seven standards for major variations. Does anybody else want to do these? No? Someday, you guys will take me up on that. I feel confident. Standard number one, the request of variation will not have a substantial adverse impact on the use, enjoyment, or property values of adjoining properties. So, this is really just changing the extent of, of the massing changes, to change the roof pitch on the roof of the house from a 412 to a 1212, which is about 20 degrees. So that doesn't substantially change light and vents to neighborhood, to neighboring houses, and to the amount of sunlight that gets into backyards and those sorts of things. So I do believe that that standard has been met.
I agree. I'd also point out that there's no evidence that's been submitted that there would be a negative adverse impact on the property.
Number two, the request of variation is in keeping with the intent of the zoning ordinance. The intent of the zoning ordinance is to allow people to modify their homes to keep up with their families and the needs of their families and the changing times and the ways with which we live. So I do believe that that standard has been met. Number three, the alleged hardship or practical difficulty is peculiar to the property. This is a very unique property. There are about eight of these, these houses without the basements are called Luxembourg houses, and there's about eight of them in all of Evanston. And they are a very unique problem. They're a difficult house to deal with. And so by being able to change the roof pitch and get everything to work within the footprint of the house is particularly challenging, but they've managed to do that. And so I do believe that this standard has been met.
I agree.
Number four, the property owner would suffer a particular hardship or practical difficulty as distinguished from a mere inconvenience if the strict letter of the regulations were to be carried out. Again, these houses don't have basements, and so their first floor is at a weird level, and their second floor is really their first floor, and it's, it's a peculiar, it's a peculiar building type. And so if you are not, if they're not allowed to change the roof pitch to get a little bit more livable space, there's really no other option here, short of raising the house, which I think is not what the zoning, the intent of the zoning ordinance is. So I do believe that that standard has been met.
I agree.
Number five, the purpose of the variation is not based exclusively upon a desire to extract additional income from the property. The homeowners have lived there for several years and are interested in making this their family home. Their, their intention is not to put the house back on the market, but in an event. I do believe that that standard has been met.
I agree.
Number six, the alleged difficulty or hardship has not been created by any person having an interest in the property. Again, this is a, this is a longstanding house and a peculiar building type that clearly the existing owners had nothing to do with. So I do believe that that standard has been met.
I agree.
And number seven, the requested variation requires the least deviation from the applicable regulation among the feasible options identified before the zoning board of appeals. The extent of the variances is now to changing the roof pitch for about three feet along the north property line. And that is indeed the minimum change necessary to achieve their goals and to make this property more usable for the homeowners. So I do believe that that standard has been met.
I agree.
All right. So now that we have gone through the standards, is there a motion?
In the case of 1026 Elmwood Avenue, ZBA 16ZMJV0072, I recommend that we approve the request for the proposed 2.3 north interior side yard setback where five is required to raise the existing roof line. That's the only one?
Yes. It has been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? With a vote of five to zero, your motion has passed, and good luck with your project. All right. So the next thing is this idea of neighborhood letters. Now, the question I have is, do we wait for everyone else to be here, to actually get a full board? Because theoretically, we should have a new member by next meeting, and ideally, Muffey would be back by then, and then we can all have a conversation at the same time about it.
And if you want, I can request Law to be here?
I would love for that to happen.
I actually agree with Scott that they do notice these cases, maybe not so perfectly in the case of 1026 Elmwood. But this case was not only noticed, but it's been continued once before, and it gives people ample opportunity to be able to come in here, which is why we put the little sign in front of your house and all that stuff like that.
Yeah.
And this is actually a legal public hearing, which is why we pay attention to Robert's Rules of Orders and have Mario here and everything. So if that's the only reason, then I, I mean, I agree with Scott that that should be okay.
I'd also comment, and I'd actually, if it helps Mario prepare, I, my interpretation is, we have to find, for the standard to be met, we have to find that there would be a substantial adverse impact, which means some, some, there has to be some testimony or evidence that something negative is going to happen to the adjoining properties. The default then ought to be that no such adverse impact is existing unless there's evidence introduced that establishes that. That's my view on how that standard ought to be read.
I mean, it's the same, it's the same issue, the case that we just heard. There was no letters of support or letters?
Well, there were, there were four letters of support.
Okay.
I don't disagree with any of you. I quite frankly, find the letters of support troubling, because it really puts the onus on the neighbor, on the, on the applicant to strong-arm or their neighbor into getting an approval. And if somebody isn't comfortable giving that approval, it can create an untenable situation in the neighborhood.
Right.
And I'm not a fan of that. It's just, it seems that in everything we're reading and looking at in dapper and through everything, it's, it started to come up that, well, if you need the letters of support, so if you don't have them, you'll never get it, and if you have them, then you're good to go.
Except for my-
I guess that's just not my feeling on it.
I, I agree with that. And my view of the letters, for example, that were just submitted in the case before us, and I don't think that this onus should be on the property owner, but these, this type of letter that the Elmwood property submitted, to me, is valueless. It's a letter written by the applicant-
Right.
-presented with a signature block for their neighbor to sign. That doesn't mean the neighbor understands it. And, and these neighbors, in this case in particular, the Elmwood case, didn't even put their addresses, so I don't even know if they're, if they're-
If they're people.
-adjoining neighbors.
Right.
So-
Right.
In my, you know, in my view, that type of evidence doesn't have any value to our cases.
Okay. So I think it would be good, I'd like for all of us to be sort of on the same page with that. So I think we might need to revisit this next time with the two additional members, just so that there is a consensus across the board on how we're feeling about those letters, theoretically.
And do you want Law present for that?
Oh, good Lord. I know. I don't want to make him come here and sit here just for that. It depends. Tell me what, tell me what his feelings are.
Well, I mean, the questions that you raised with me earlier today-
Get some input.
If he is present, then he can explain his reasoning behind those-
Okay.
-and you guys can have a dialogue about it-
Right.
Rather than going back and forth individually through me.
So just to be clear, what I had expressed to Melissa earlier in the day is, that by, by putting such a high weight on the two adjacent neighbors, it seems as those people, those certain properties have more rights than anybody else within 500 feet. And so if that's the case, then we should be noticing only the five adjacent houses and not people within 500 feet. Because I think that the, the opinion of somebody who's 500 feet away is equally as valuable as the opinion of the person next door. Otherwise, we shouldn't be noticing 500 feet.
So let me ask, if there are letters of disapproval supported, submitted, would that be different, in your view, than letters of support?
Absolutely, and I'll explain why.
Yeah.
I mean, first of all, I generally think letter, if, I generally think if somebody has a problem with the project, they ought to take the time and come in and explain why. However, a letter of, a piece of paper on which someone says, "I'm against this," to the extent it doesn't explain that reasoning, to me, has almost the same lack of value as a letter that says, "I support this, sign it." That said, in my mind, because the standard is that we have to find it won't have a substantial adverse impact on the adjoining properties, that at least a letter against weighs on that factor. It says, "This person is of the opinion," whether we agree with it or not as a board, "that it will have an adverse impact on the value or enjoyment of their property." Absent a letter like that, there's literally no evidence that's been submitted that weighs on that factor, so there is no evidence of a adverse impact.
No. I mean, we as a board are called, in our professional opinion, to weigh in on that fact, even if neighbors within that notified area are not weighing and are not present. Isn't that our job here as a board, is to weigh in on that and to make that determination based on the evidence that's presented?
Based on the evidence that's been presented, yes.
Yes.
So without any evidence being presented, I don't know how one could find that there would be a substantial adverse impact.
I'm not sure I, I'm wholly on board with that, because there's a reason we go out to the sites and take a look at the property and see its surroundings, because we have to become familiar with the property, and it's our opinion as to what that may or may not do. So I think in addition to those people who are within the 500 feet, it is the, is the opinion of the people on this board to say whether there is an adverse impact. So, for example, that's why I respectfully disagree with your, your contention on number one, that no evidence was provided. I happen to live within 500 feet of that particular property, and I explained the reasoning for why I found that to be an adverse impact. So, and I think that, but that's anybody on the board has the ability to do that. That's a good question for Mario, though.
But that's, see, hang on a second.
Is it specifically evidence-based, or is it based on our, our professional opinion? Because that's what you're asking for on all of them, on all seven. It's my opinion.
Well, and isn't that why we have a range of viewpoints on the board, so that there is a range of professional opinions, people that are bringing an architecture background, a developer's background, and other backgrounds?
My view is, our job is to collect evidence. That's why we have a packet. That's why we have testimony. We collect evidence. Some of the evidence may be visiting the site, right? You collect your own evidence.
Right.
Our job is then to take the evidence and apply it to the standards. That's where our judgment comes in, applying it to the standards. So, in my view, if there's not evidence of an adverse impact, then there's not evidence of it.
And we always see the neighbors that actually do come in to chime in and say yea or nay. I mean, that's when they really have an opinion, because otherwise, you can tell that that, it's not even impacting their lives one bit where they actually want to come in and talk to us.
I will have to say, in this...
Either one way or another.
In this particular case on Lawndale, right, we were in a pickle. There was no quorum if I was not on the, on the board that day. So, it's not like I had the ability to recuse myself, to stand out there and say, to give testimony. So, I guess that's where my testimony as being on the board, for me, that's my professional opinion, being both on the board and as a member, but we don't have to just argue that point anymore.
And as a neighbor, and as a neighbor as well, right.
Right, right, right.
I would just disagree that we, you know, somehow, if people aren't here physically in person, that we somehow discount their views, whether they're conveying their views through email or letters. Those should weigh just as much as if people are standing here in person. Those are conventionally accepted ways of communicating, and it should be...
It's just a question how much we weigh it.
I think that, I think that Scott is not saying that, that if, if a letter against had been submitted, that would have been as valid as that person showing up. The fact of the matter is, in that particular case, I couldn't do either, because it's just a whole issue.
How are we to, how are we to...
How are we to second-guess if a neighbor signs a letter of support saying, you know, "I support this, you know, support this project"? We have to assume that they are understanding the proposal. I mean, they are signing it. So, my assumption is, is that they are understanding the proposals presented and therefore are supporting the project. Because you said earlier, you know, they're signing their name, but they don't even know what, you know, they're not even knowing the project is proposed.
No, I said that could be the case, because some of the letters we receive are nothing more than one sentence saying, "I know my neighbor is doing something, I'm in favor of it." To me, that doesn't show any kind of educated opinion.
And if you come into my house with a letter, and you're my neighbor, I like you, I'm trying to keep the peace, I'm going to say, okay, you know, but not even really read it, try to get you off my porch, you know?
To me, but to me, that's a question of weighing that evidence. So, I mean, like, you can give it, you can, you as a board member can give all the evidence or any piece of evidence, whatever weight you think is appropriate. So, in this case, but I think what we're talking about is the absence of letters, right?
Yeah.
So, how are you supposed to weigh and, like, evidence that doesn't exist, is sort of my point? And if there's no evidence that's been submitted on the issue of impact, then how can you find there'd be an adverse impact if there's literally zero evidence that's been submitted?
Because, because again, you go back to your opinion, right? My, my professional opinion of going out to the job site becomes testimony, and so based on that, based on my seeing that and my explaining my decision, I believe that gives me the right to say that I disagree with that standard being met. Because if somebody else isn't going, I can't be expected to follow just what the people come up with. That's not the role here. The role here is to bring each of our own individual experiences and expertise to bear on these standards and help keep our city what it is. And we all have different interpretations of that, which is absolutely what it should be. But I think it's, I think you might be stretching to say that if somebody else doesn't present it, that it doesn't exist.
Right.
If one of us presents it, I think we've now put it into the record.
I respectfully disagree.
Sure.
So, Scott, so then, are you expecting the applicant to submit how they're going to negatively impact on adjoining properties?
I'm expecting that if a adjoining property believes that they will have some sort of adverse impact against them, they have ample notice and opportunity to come in and voice that.
I think...
And/or can simply, as we see many times, just submit that email or whatever to Melissa or to zoning, to the administrator. We see that all the time.
So, I think, so I think the clarification we need from Mario, quite frankly, is this on, specifically on standard number one, is, is it really just about testimony from third-party people? Or it does the, the experience and expertise and our opinion of those people on the board, does that enter in as testimony? Which you may or may not agree with, which is fine.
We have had, I will just point out...
I don't think we agree on anything.
We have had some neighbors that have come in against the project, that have hired, like, economists to come in and say, "This is going to kill the value of my property."
Yeah.
Right.
Not that everybody should have to pay that, right? It's a weight of the evidence. Not that anyone should have to pay an economist, but if someone cares, to Mirna's point, if someone cares, their next-door neighbor has a flyer sitting on their front door saying, "This case is going to be heard," and you have an opportunity to voice your dissatisfaction with it.
Yeah.
If they don't come in and express that, then I think it's a completely reasonable assumption that nobody cares.
But I, I...
I think that's in a perfect world, and I don't think, I don't think that's, I don't think that's a correct assumption. I think that there is professional, you know, professional experience that we're supposed to bring to bear.
I think we may need Mario to weigh in on this, because it doesn't sound like we're going to get anywhere. Okay. I will request...
But I hear that there's, there's a history there that I obviously don't have as a newer board member, so I may be looking at it differently.
I don't think you are, though, because you and I are looking at it the same way, and I've been here for forever.
So, so the professionalism, the professional expertise that I bring to bear on this is, how are we supposed to, as arbiters of a set of rules, supposed to do that? And in my experience, whether it's in front of arbitrators, courts, mediators, or whomever else...
Right.
You're provided with the set of rules, and you are to weigh the evidence that is submitted.
So, so going...
And apply the rules to that evidence, not come up with your own evidence.
I agree.
And your, our job is to, as a board, to apply, to weigh the evidence that is submitted for and against, and apply that against the standards. That's my view, in my professional expertise about what our charge is.
Okay.
And like we said, we're all bringing our professional expertise, so this is a legal proceeding, and Scott, as a lawyer, is bringing his professional expertise. I would bring mine as a city planner, you would bring yours as architects. And so, what ends up happening with that is that if we're looking at this cut and dried, like the law, if you didn't present evidence, it's not there. I mean, it's pretty much like that, right?
But what that suggests, then, is that, that, yeah, because, and that means that anytime a, an applicant says, "This is absolutely the least deviation necessary," I have to take that at face value.
No, because you can ask questions of that applicant, like you frequently do, and say, "Well, could you do this a foot shorter?" And they say, "Yes." And then you then cite that back to them as the evidence they've presented, when you say, "You admitted, you could have done it less." You're collecting evidence in the form of testimony in that case.
But in the case of, how is it, you know, if we ask them, "Is this going to negatively impact on their neigh, on your neighbor?", they're going to say, "No." But they're, of course, they're going to say, "No."
Right.
They're trying to win.
But still, for that standard...
It's the neighbor that needs to come in and say, "I have a problem with this." That's the evidence we weigh on that factor.
Exactly.
In my view.
Yeah.
I get it.
So, not that I need an answer to this right now, but keep it in mind for the discussion with Mario. So, say someone requests a setback variance a foot from a property line. Do you want a letter of support from that neighbor next door that is closest to it, or is that treated the exact same if they don't submit anything? In, in my opinion, I don't think it matters whether we get our letter or not.
I completely agree.
I disagree. That, I think that's helpful testimony to the record.
Okay. We can discuss it further with Mario, see what the legal implications are. Yeah. I think that would be helpful.
And if I'm, you know, if I'm incorrectly interpreting my, you know, my role in looking at that standard, then that's helpful feedback, but that's my current understanding and the way I would approach it.
All right. Yeah, and I don't think anyone is incorrect. I mean, everybody has their own opinion, it's all subjective. Yeah. But we'll get some legal input. Yeah, that'd be fantastic.
Okay.
All right.
When's the next meeting, Melissa?
Motion to adjourn.
Hang on.[1718.41]